I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is approval of minutes and I want to tell you that we had something. So, September 18th minutes on page three at the top it says Jim Tripp made a motion to accept the recommendation of the town beautification committee to pay $650 for the banner on the defunct gas station and $6,273 for the holiday decorations. What I would like to add is to come from the contingency account.
Yeah, that's what we discussed.
That was seconded by Ralph Zampano and is offset by fundraising and donations should actually be after account. So it should read for the holiday decorations to come from the contingency account and to be offset by fundraising and donations. Seconded by Ralph Zampano, vote unanimous, motion carried. And that's what I recall happened.
Yep.
Is that consensus?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to accept those minutes as amended?
So moved.
I'll second them again.
Thank you. So I'll just reiterate for Laura, so $6,273 for the holiday decorations to come from the contingency account and to be offset by fundraising and donations. It was seconded by Ralph Zampano, vote unanimous, motion carried. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. So then the October 2nd minutes, which I have no changes in tonight, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Seconded by Ralph. Is there any changes to those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. The next acceptance of the agenda, I need to add letter C under new business and it will be the purple sheet that you have, waiver of repayment of rehabilitation loan. This is something that's come to our attention actually today. Someone is selling a house and they have an old lien on the property from 1980 from an old loan program that the town used to operate and they're asking that that be waived. So we will be talking about that later tonight. With that addition to the agenda, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. I have nothing under communications and correspondence, so I'll open it up to any public comment. We'll go into old business and it would be action on the proposed mobile food vendor ordinance. There was only one comment and one written comment and the selectmen were all here to hear it. One was someone made a comment that we should move forward with the question, which is the ordinance and just had a few questions on the fee schedule, which we're going to talk about later tonight. The other person had commented, I will remind you. This person felt there should be an annual fee and a six month and a per day fee. Seems there may be desire to do a two week or summer, but I feel that might cause unnecessary extra work and also fees based on the more business advantageous areas such as the Discovery Park, riverfront overlook and near the new park. So that was really more to do with the fee schedule as opposed to the ordinance itself. The fees are not set by the ordinance, the fees will be set by this board a little bit later tonight, we're going to talk about it, but that is not part of the ordinance. That's something that's adopted by the selectmen as needed and as warranted. So is there a motion to approve the proposed mobile food vendor ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by, is that Ben?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. So we will proceed to have this put into the newspaper and then in accordance with the charter, it will become the law in the town after a period of time if there's no further decision on that. Okay, so we'll move on to the proposed land swap with Exchange Club of Portland. I don't believe we're ready for action on this, but I will ask Mike Pelton if he has an update on the committee that's working on this.
Yes, we, last we met, we had gone over the land and done a couple of changes with it, the original proposal. We somewhat equalized the deal, so it was much more fair to us and to them. We'll be meeting with them next Tuesday at 9:30 to finalize the details and we'll bring that back to the board.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, then we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments tonight? There being none, we'll go on to new business, reviewing and updating the fee schedule for vendors and I asked Michelle to prepare some suggested fees which are in front of you. So, whereas the schedule of registration fees for vendor, peddler, hawker, solicitor or canvasser permits shall be set from time to time and a schedule of such fees shall be filed with the town clerk, now therefore be it resolved that the schedule for vending, peddling, hawking, soliciting and canvassing in the town of Portland be and is hereby set. And this is the proposal, $125 for one calendar year, that's for food trucks only, $100 for door-to-door soliciting for a year, $50 for door-to-door soliciting for, $50 for six months, $10 for one month or less, nonprofits and veterans, $0. Now, what needs to be clarified is that the $125 is for food trucks and that that would be, if six months is the only amount of time, then it would be half of $125, not the $50. So I think I would suggest that the one year door-to-door, six months, comma, door-to-door and one month or less, door-to-door and nonprofits and veterans upon documentation is door-to-door only. That is not for the food trucks. Is that in agreement?
Makes sense.
But then how are we spelling out the food truck for their smaller curate, their smaller numbers?
I believe the ordinance says that it would be prorated. Didn't we say that?
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, if they came in for a permit, so I think we were doing it calendar year. So if they came in in July 1, it would be six months, they'd pay a prorated fee, but then it would be on January 1, it would be $125.
I just think, honestly, I think we should just make it easier and I don't care which way you want to go. If we want to hold the $125, then switch the year to year to $125 and so on and fix the.
You could do that, Ben, and just make it all consistent.
It needs to be, in my opinion, it needs to be consistent. I don't care which way you go. If you want to, if you want to just simplify it, instead of $125, maybe make it $120 and then go down from there. Make the door-to-door $120 and then do 60, because that seems like it was supposed to be the half and then maybe one month or less, make that 15 and then.
Yep.
I just want one other clarification that I see that could potentially be a problem that I want to just figure out now. The veteran owned, does that also then apply to the food truck?
No.
Well then, that's not how I read it.
Well, I'm saying that I don't think it should be.
That's fine.
I think that should be door-to-door only.
Okay, that's.
But that's up to this board.
If that's the case, then we need to put that in quotes at the end. I'd be fine with that.
Door-to-door only, right?
Right. Or you have a discussion if this board says a veteran-owned food truck is exempt, then so be it, but it has to be one or the other. I don't want, I don't want gray.
So are you proposing $120 for one year?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, because then you're going down a little bit on the other one and you're going up a little on one, so. One, so from the top down, $120, $120, 60, and I'd probably go 15, 10 seems a little cheaper.
I don't think you need to differentiate. I think it should just say one year, six months, one month or less.
Oh yeah, there you go.
Right? The only thing is the nonprofits and veterans, but that's up to this board.
Yep, that just simplifies, because nobody needs to have problems reading this, it should be crystal clear.
So we say we, so we drop the top line and we just make it one year door-to-door and make it $120, we drop the top line.
I think she, I don't want, I think you're just combining the first two.
Yes.
So all the language would now become calendar year, food truck and door-to-door, $120.
Well, I would suggest you just take off where it says new, $125, one calendar year food truck only. So it would be, strike the 100, it would be 120, one year, strike door-to-door.
Yep.
60, six months, 15, one month or less.
Yep.
Zero, nonprofits, veterans upon documentation, door-to-door.
So, is there really a nonprofit food truck out there? I'm just trying to talk a lot. I, I can't give you permission.
All right, I'll let you speak.
There could be a situation, this isn't known knowledge necessarily, but I've been speaking on a certain team and we're working towards having, using our trailer as a donated service for like, you know, coffee and donuts or something like that for first responders on long-term employment, you know, for like major incidents and things like that. So there could be, I guess I'm just speaking for me, there could be a spin-off of what I do as.
A nonprofit.
Entity of it and there are others, other people that do do this, nonprofit organizations such as a church or something like that or BFW would be wanting to partner with my business to be able to do something.
And another good example is the Portland Fire Department, their french fry, if they were to do it on some event.
Maybe we should leave it zero for everybody. Forget about the door-to-door. I don't, you know what I'm saying? Yes.
Rick? So, I don't think it occurs in Portland, but in other towns, for example, Lions Club, they have a food trailer in Colchester. They set it up on the town greens and when they're having their carnival, when they're, like for a little, do, set it up like say Memorial Day weekend, it'll do pancake breakfast. So that's technically a food trailer, but they're a nonprofit.
And I think a lot of taxpayers would agree with that. I think that is, for those type of things where you're giving back, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with that, as long as they, it says in here somewhere, they have to show the proper certification.
Yes.
It's not going to be willy-nilly, you know, somebody trying to make money and pretending. It's going to be legitimate. And then I guess the second part of it is, we just have to make a decision on the veteran owned, what you guys want to do there.
They'd have to have documentation.
Right. So you guys have to start at one end, work your way to the other.
It's fine with me.
I'm fine with that.
I want this simple for this first year.
Yep.
We can always revisit these.
Yep.
Right?
Agreed.
Yeah, it's an experiment.
Let's see how it goes.
So if you're a veteran.
Yep.
And say you're a Vietnam War veteran and, you know, you've been out, you're just, now you're John Citizen for the last 40 years and you happen to be like Joe and you have a food truck and that's how you're making your living.
Right.
So are you, is this saying they don't have to have a license?
No, they have to have a license.
Oh, they don't have, but they don't have to pay?
They don't have to pay, but they still have to have a permit.
Right.
The nonprofit still has to have the food license, still has to have the permit. If they're on a private, for-profit, private land, they still have to go to the planning and zoning to have a site plan as well. If they're on town-owned land, then my office would determine whether they get the permit or not and how they would operate.
Well, I don't know, I would just ask the question, a lot of people are veterans.
And I'm going to follow it up, what if we're missing out on something else? We could be opening this to not just veterans, there could be other things that everybody thinks is a good idea, so maybe, you know, if this board doesn't want to go down that road, but we have to be clear on that now.
So let's just look at this, so again, you're speaking, someone we know is going to be in town, if he was a veteran, you'd be saying, you'd be waiving the $120 for him to be able to set up his truck.
Right. But, you know, could they be a veteran and in the National Guard and maybe they, well, went, served active for two weeks or something, I don't know.
Maybe a one-time, one-time exemption for veterans. You can, this is our rule, we can, we can make it whatever we want.
Yeah.
So it doesn't need to be open-ended, if that's your fear and somebody is, fine.
Well, Joe could be, been a veteran, maybe he earned the Persian Gulf War or something.
Consider my house, my father was in the Marines, did three tours in Vietnam, I consider living my life being a veteran. Personally, I'm not a veteran. But the other, the other thing that I think, Ben, that's really good, the idea that if you're going to homage to service, then maybe on a per event, because someone like me, even if I am a veteran, am I, am I expecting that I'm going to not have to pay for permits because I've been a veteran?
Well, that's what I'm questioning, I'm just asking that.
If it's more of a capitalist venture, I think you want to stick to the fee schedule. If it's veteran or nonprofit owned or let's say nonprofit partnered for a single event, then you shouldn't charge a permit fee for them, a license fee for them for that if you want to pay homage to them.
I'm going to bring us back to the board and so I need to know what you want to do.
At this point, I'd be fine with nonprofits and veteran one time. I think that sends a nice message, I'm fine with that, unless you guys, whatever.
Well, I just think you, yeah, I kind of agree with you, Ben, that like the veteran, it's kind of vague because they might, a lot of veterans would be in it for profit, that just might be what they do for their.
And as this body, we have to look at the big picture, if it eventually is hurting the non-veteran who is helping the community by going to different breweries in different areas, we're not trying to make an unlevel playing field. I do believe it is nice to thank, and I make a habit out of thanking every veteran I see. Thank you, Julio. But I do believe, I wouldn't, I'd be comfortable with the one time, the one time for the veterans.
What do you mean by one time?
What's the first application?
One year or one month?
First application, doesn't matter, first application. We waive the first application. Well, I don't care if they come in for the $15 or the $120.
Nonprofits are always zero.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And then the veteran in quotes.
Then I think you would make another line.
Sure.
How about that? So it would be $0, veteran, US veteran, right?
Yes.
Well, right?
This is brought up an excellent point.
I'm getting like you, Ben.
I know. But you'll see, this will, there will be no issues later, it'll be very clear.
US veterans, one time.
Exemption.
Right, one time fee exemption.
Yes, perfect. That cannot be misconstrued.
I think that's good.
And I think it's a nice message.
I do too. All right, to reiterate, $120, one year, $60, six months, $15, one month or less, $0, nonprofits, $0, US veterans, one time fee exemption? Is that right?
One time veteran, first fee exemption.
Exemption.
Fee exemption, yes.
Right?
Yep.
Yes, we're taking off the top line, Laura, so $125, one calendar year food truck only is stricken and then we're striking 100 and making it 120. It'll just read one year and we'll strike door-to-door, 60, six months, 15, one month or less, zero, nonprofits, striking and veterans document, upon documentation and then a new line, $0, US veterans, one time fee exemption.
Susan, for the nonprofits and the veterans, you probably want to see documentation.
For nonprofits? Okay, and so.
And veterans.
Upon documentation, good point, upon documentation. So we'll add that to, upon documentation.
And Susan, you may say no to this and that's fine.
Yep.
If you're allowed to just ask the other gentleman in the back of the room if they liked the fee schedule and maybe a yes or a no and I'd be fine with that.
Yep, I would too. Okay, thank you. And the other, others agree in the audience? Thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Rick. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed and extensions? Motion carries. Now I think these take effect in two weeks, but the ordinance has another process that it goes through and I, I don't have the charter with me, I think it's, I think it might be 30 days, if I don't, I'll check. If you have any questions, call my office. All right, you're welcome, thank you. Thank you for helping craft the ordinance. Good luck. Good night. Okay, so the next item we have is refunds of excess payments.
All right.
Jim?
I will make a motion that we refund the amount of $26.03 to David P. Charmet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
And I'll make the motion, make a motion that we refund the amounts of $202.36, $206.14 and $346.41 to Vault Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Status and committee reports, oh, excuse me, letter C, waiver of repayment of rehabilitation. So I need to introduce this to you. If you could kindly pass on to the recording secretary.
Susan, there was no appointments, right?
No, no appointments. There is a house in town and it is owned currently by Bruce Bachman and Janice Olson at number 956 Glastonbury Turnpike, it's, excuse me, right on the line between Glastonbury and Portland. And this house has been for sale and it is now a tentative sale with a closing this week is what they're hoping for. And there is an old lien on this property from 1980 and the lien is for $6,800. And at the time, it was a program that the town utilized to encourage residents, if they bought a house or they were renovating a house, to improve it and rehabilitate it. And the purpose was to increase the value of the property so that there'd be a better place to live and also it helps improve the grant list. So the house that we're talking about started out as I think a house in need of rehabilitation and this family did rehabilitate it and they added on to it greatly. It's a rather large home. So one of the arguments for forgiveness for this loan is that it did its purpose, which was to rehabilitate property and make the value greater of the property. The owner of the property came in to see me and town finance director today and she wrote a letter and it says, "To First Selectmen Grantsfield, we are requesting a waiver of the Rehabilitation Program Community Development Loan in amount of $6,800 from 1980. We were offered this grant to rehab our residents and understood it to be possibly not repaid as it was a grant. We are retiring and this expense is a hardship for us. I hope you can approve our request because we were told it was the town's option or discretion for repayment. Thank you very much," signed Janice Olson and Bruce Bachman. And she added to this on the back, "To First Selectmen Grantsfield, we hope you agree the grant was money well invested by bringing a historic Portland home to a higher tax assessment, therefore recouping the original loan," signed Janice Olson and Bruce Bachman. And you will see in the lien statement that if the property is sold, conveyed or otherwise transferred by the owner-occupant, the rehabilitation funds or a portion thereof may be recovered by the grantor from the proceeds at the sole option of the Portland Board of Selectmen. So that's why this is at your table, because it is the selectmen's option. And I'll read the proposed resolution, waiver of repayment of rehabilitation loan, whereas on April 29, 1980, the town of Portland granted a community development loan under the rehabilitation program to Bruce Bachman and Janice Olson of 956 Glastonbury Turnpike, Portland, Connecticut, 06480, in a principal sum of $6,800, of which is recorded in the Land Records, volume 134, page 139. And whereas the purpose of said loan was to assist Bruce Bachman and Janice Olson with the rehabilitation of the owner-occupant structure located at 956 Glastonbury Turnpike and whereas Bruce Bachman and Janice Olson have resided at 956 Glastonbury Turnpike since the loan was granted and whereas they have lived in the home for many years, are retiring and selling the property, they stated the expense of $6,800, $800 repayment of the loan would create a hardship to them. And whereas in accordance with the Rehabilitation Program Community Development Loan Agreement, if the property is sold, the rehabilitation funds or a portion thereof may be recovered by the town from the proceeds at the sole option of the Portland Board of Selectmen. Now therefore be it resolved that due to the hardship request made by Bruce Bachman and Janice Olson, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Portland hereby waives that rehabilitation loan in the amount of $6,800."
How many more of these exist?
There's probably a half a dozen or so.
About the same value?
Some of them are larger amounts. I don't, I don't remember all of them, Ben. Some of them have already been forgiven, some of them have been repaid, it depends on the circumstances, but there have been several that were waived repayment. So it's not the first time this request has come to the board for other properties.
So you're not concerned about setting a precedent?
Present this, yes.
On both sides, no?
Yes, some have been repaid, some of the, say, just in looking at it quickly, some of them were more money, like 20,000 and so forth, some of those have been repaid. Some have been forgiven.
Do you know what the last one that we looked for Dave was? Because I can't recall it since I've been.
I don't, well, honestly, since Tom Robinson has been here, they've always either come to the board or they've been repaid in the past before he was the finance director. I'm not sure they always came to this board. This is an old program. I'm not even sure at this point where that.
Was the intent of the program initially to provide the improvement to their, and then recruit the loss and reinvest that money? Is it a still active program? I know it's 40 years ago.
Originally, I think they did, Mike, but many of those loans are so old that they haven't been repaid. And what we could do, and we certainly can think about this. And what we could do, and we certainly can think about this, is go for more grant money. This is not town money. This is grant money that came from, I think, a federal loan? That's administered by the state.
Yet it wouldn't be paid back to the town?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, so the town got the grant?
Yeah.
Do you know what the property taxes are there? I see the assessment. Well, I guess we could just multiply through the whole rate.
Yeah, the assessment. Very, very, pretty good. I'm not sure what taxes and get your financials.
It's an old building.
Yeah, so let's see, it's, I should take 337. It looks familiar. Three, two.
Are they current on their property taxes?
By understanding, yes. I haven't looked it up in the last few days, but I believe.
I think I'm leaning towards forgiving it. And the thing that's pushing me that way is they did increase the value substantially. I don't know if you've seen this home?
Oh, yeah.
And I'd be willing to bet that they have paid a lot more in taxes since the renovations. And I think that in itself probably, you know, the town got their money back and then some.
They're relocating to another home in Portland.
Oh. They're actually staying.
So they're not leaving town.
Oh, they're not going to, I was thinking that they were going to be snowbirds. You know, they were going south. Oh, that's nice.
I think they're relocating on the same road.
They are, they're on the same road.
As long as the taxes are current, they're not delinquent on anything else. They don't have water up there.
All that would be paid because the closing is happening this week.
Right, yeah.
That's the plan, now you know closings.
Yeah. I mean, I always get concerned about setting a precedent. But I agree with Ben from a dollar and cents point of view. They probably, more than, because that's a beautiful house.
Yeah.
And that's money from, what we're talking about, that's money from 1980. So it's $7,000 in 1980, so it's not-
That was real money back then. Did you buy a house in 35?
I'm good with it.
Will you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To approve the resolution as written.
I make a motion to approve the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? We will bring all of these to you, and there is no precedent setting here. There may be occasions where you determine all or part would be repaid or none would be repaid depending on the circumstances. There are also a, I don't know if there's any remaining, but there were some businesses that had taken out loans, which were a little bit larger amounts. And there was one that was not repaid, and we will have to bring them to you. The owner is no longer here, and it was a UCC lien. It was not on the building. So there was equipment that was purchased, and the equipment is no longer available. So that money did not come in, but you will get that at another time.
Was that a grant, state money or town money?
It was the same program, pretty much.
Bigger dollar mark?
It was in the twenties. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and extensions, motion carries. Now we'll move on to status and committee reports, and we have a special presentation by Jim Tripp. Is that right, Jim?
Yes.
Jim and I are going to share things, walk through the status while he shows us.
You would move your chairs?
You can turn it on?
I was hoping I could have pulled it on.
No. Yeah, Ben, at least in the front. Let's see if we got control here. How's that? You want those off too?
Alright, effectively what we wanted to do is that we've had a lot of conversation about the park and the status of the park. A lot of questions that have been coming in Facebook-wise. Basically, you know, we're asking in terms of what's in, what's out, if there've been any changes, things of that nature, a lot of the rumors. So we've been having a lot of these discussions lately and really wanting to kind of put it into pictures and really show people where we're at. And by the way, the fact that we're getting closer to what they would term as substantial completion of this park, it's really, I think, a good time for folks to get a good sense of just how far the project has come along and how close we are to completion. This particular picture here is, I kind of refer to this as this is almost going to be like the postcard, you know, shot for the park. Shows everything in one shot. It's coming around the soccer fields, the baseball fields. You can see the realignment of Strickland, which is being done right now. Currently, the road is closed to through traffic. As we go through, we're going to take a little bit closer look at some of the, some of the status of this. Again, this is actually from above, basically the north hill, almost sitting over Carr Brook. So again, it's just a slightly different viewpoint of it. It allows you to see some of the properties in here. And really, again, just sometimes seeing it from a different perspective is, you know, gives you a good point of view from it. First thing we want to talk about really is just the soccer fields. If you guys remember where we were, you know, even six months ago, you were looking at, we were doing a lot of wetting in the fields and trying to keep the dust down. The grass now is being, it's been planted, it's being, it's being cut, it's being fertilized, and it's coming in pretty good. You can still see the differential from, you know, where some of the different, you know, in between the fields, but it's actually coming along nicely. The other thing this picture does show here is, you can take a look and you can see this is the paving of the, of the path. There was a lot of discussion about paving or not paving. In the final analysis, based on making sure that everything's, you know, handicap accessible, the actual, the entire walking path around the facility is going to be paved.
Yeah, and the only thing I'd add about with regards to the soccer field is we get a lot of questions about, are you going to be able to use them? Are you going to be able to use them in the spring? Soccer fields are going in very well. I don't know, I would be probably going, we're probably going to err on the conservative when we get to spring to see what condition they're in. But we certainly don't want to rip them up because we couldn't wait another season. So it's something we'll decide in the spring. But I would, my thought would be we're leaning not to use them.
Could you use the microphone?
I'm going to have to turn it off because I can't touch them. That's why.
So yeah, so I think, so in all likelihood, that's what will happen. I would guess we'll probably have to maybe pass on, but we'll see. It'll be something we'll decide in the spring. But they are coming in really, really good.
And I decided to take a couple of shots pretty much directly overhead, right? This is actually, would be baseball one, so this would be the premier, the premier of the two fields. You can see here, looking down, you know, the wall. And what really struck me is, I took a series of pictures. We basically, we meet out there every two weeks. So we try to get some pictures as the park has been evolving every couple of weeks, and we try to take similar shots. The idea being is you can actually see the progression. And what struck me is you could actually see where they've really started to carve out, where the grass was basically planted in a square. You can see where they've really carved it out and they're starting to create the definition of the field. And here you can see the concrete, and of course we have, you know, the dugouts. And of course, there's baseball two, which is the facility that's, you know, that's the baseball facility that's going to be closer to the road, to the roadway. And of course, over here nestled in, this is where the concession building's being built, mechanicals, the playscape, and the splash pad.
So with regards to the baseball fields, what's going on right now is they are working on the fencing going down the lines. Everything's set behind the home plate, but they still have the poles in for the fencing down the lines, and they'll be working on that.
Well, question?
Yep.
Will the baseball field grass be ready to play in the spring? Or is that going to be sort of like-
Yeah, well, what I will tell you is the grass on the baseball fields is not as thick. Jim and I walked it last week, I think it was. And it clearly is not as, did not come in as thick. So it's going to have to be reseeded. We originally had this conversation about whether we could pull off having a late opening in the spring. Again, we'll have to see, but it clearly has to be, it's thin, it's thinner for whatever reason and how it grew, it's definitely thinner. So trying to get the spring opening, we'll have to see how it, how it looks.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Really, it's going to be looking at all of the fields. It's going to be evaluate, you know, where we're at, how does the grass come back? You know, you can see here, right, where you've got, you know, it's a little bit different coloring and things of that, it's just, it's still trying to come in.
Yeah, we were looking at some of the grass blades, and you could see they were very immature. So it may fill in when they come in, but they're, they're very small. But it's made strides from where it was not too long ago. It's, it's been in great growth.
Yeah, it's actually, some of the grass, even all this, we were out there two weeks ago, and this had just been seeded. You know, this had just been sprayed. And this has now come in, and this is nice and thick. So it's, the progression is happening quick. Again, just an interesting shot to give you a perspective of what it's going to look like from behind home plate, you know, with the backstop. And again, the dugouts that are in place. They don't have the, basically, the chain around the dugouts yet. They're going to be working on that, but you can see that. And then of course, as Ralph was saying, we can zoom in a little bit. You can see the fence, the posts for the fencing that's going to be getting put in place.
That's all, that's real?
That, that's, yes, yes. I can, I can fly a drone, I can't do CGI.
Oh, I didn't know.
But this is, this is what struck me. So I wanted to take this one, again, a different perspective, but looking basically from the outfield back. Because again, they, they really, over the last two weeks, and really in the last week from the last time I was there, they really cleaned up. They sharpened up the line, they brought in, you know, basically another layer of clay to clean these up. They've got the base, basically the bags in, the bases that, you know, are in. And they really, you can see where they made the definition in the grass. So it's come a long way. It's, it's interesting when you go out there, and it seems like for a long time you see progress, but you see progress, you know, a little bit at a time. You kind of have to look for it. And now everything's kind of like popping up, and you're seeing a lot of, much more dramatic progress every time you go out. This is taking a look down. These are basically the two buildings that are associated with effectively the concessions pavilion. So if you look here, this is one of the bathrooms, right? Here's your men's and your women's bathrooms. There's going to be a chase in here for the mechanicals. This is actually where the concession area is going to be. You'll see a picture a little bit later, it shows the concession window. And then in this facility over here, this is going to be storage for, for equipment, et cetera. And then on this side is the main mechanical and electrical room. So this is where the big pump equipment is going to reside for the splash pad, et cetera, as well as all the electrical controls in the park, as well as the irrigation controls.
So with regards to this, the carpentry work finished last week, and they have the crane coming in on Monday to put the trusses on for the roof.
Yeah, and we were kind of hoping that was some of the stuff, some of the stuff we were hoping to have pictures for, for tonight. But the pretty nasty forecast from last week of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they rescheduled some of the vendors. So some of the things, for example, we were actually hoping, and it was scheduled, the splash pad fixtures would be in, would have gone in last week. But the way it worked out, they rescheduled, so they're now working on. The same vendor that's doing the splash pad fixtures is also working on the playscape, and they're working on the playscape right now.
Yeah.
As you will see. This is basically looking at, you know, this recreational area over here. And you'll see, this is where you're starting to see the slide. And I have some different pictures of this, we're going to go over this quick. But what's interesting about this is that this picture shows, any place you see one of these holes, it's where there's a footing for the, for the playscape equipment, for various elements in it. So there's a lot to it. This actually is going to be, this part of the playscape over here is going to be effectively an obstacle course that allows climbing and a lot of other features that wraps around what the kids playing on, are going to be able to kind of go end to end.
And he'll show you the pictures, they made a lot of progress.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, and this again, just another view of the bathrooms. As you can see, the block walls in the interior. One of the reasons this is important is that part of what was built into this is the hood so that we can actually have a fry, fry later and grill as the concession in terms of generating revenue for, at the park. One of the things you need to do with that is the block wall. Being fireproof allows you to put the equipment right up against it. So there was a lot of thought and a lot of work with the, you know, with like fire marshal stuff ahead of time, making sure that that stuff, those elements got designed properly. It's also interesting because sometimes the workers, they basically like, they like to pose occasionally when they see they're flying overhead. And again, just looking at, just basically just looking at the backside of the bathroom. So this is where the doors would be along the backside. This is, there's the one door into the concession. And then of course, this is the concession window. These two buildings here are actually going to have a roof line that's going to cover them end to end. And in the middle, you're going to have the pavilion in here where you're going to be able to eat. So people will be able to get food here, there'll be some tables underneath, and you'll be basically protected from foul balls, et cetera, while you're eating your cheeseburgers or fries or whatever you choose to be eating at that time. So get out of the inclement weather if we need to, et cetera.
What I would say about that is, you know, there was an original design for those buildings and the adjoining roof, and it was okay. And when we knew when they went out, they really didn't have the drawings they needed. So I had to redo the drawings on how the building was going to be structured. And Rockfall actually came, came out with, we even liked the roof better, the roof line better, what they had done, it looked even sharper.
Yeah, instead of it being, good point, instead of it being just a flat, a straight roof going all the way across, where does the span, they turn the trusses 90 degrees, which makes sense from a design standpoint. But what it means is you now have a gable end facing you forward. It gives you a really nice, it breaks it up. It's going to be a much nicer looking structure the way it came out, so. And again, just running through the buildings, right, block construction. That's really just showing, you know, block, and then of course the wood. And again, here's your mechanical room. And this is actually, what's interesting is this, in this wall right here, there's actually a big skid. The, the equipment for the splash pad is actually all sitting in a storage facility, and it's one big skid, the filters, the pumps, everything. The, the UV equipment to clean the water is all, it's just all going to slide right into place and then be tied into the existing plumbing. Again, just another look, and if you take a look here, all I'm going to point out, because there's some other pictures I took from the ground today because the weather wasn't quite as nice, is if you look, you see the, you know, just show how quick they're moving, you just see some of the posts in place, you see one, one slide in place. And they're moving, you know, again, just moving right along. I took this with, you know, Nick, who's basically the, you know, he's sort of, he's one of the owners that's for Dorita. And I just put this in here because, you know, he's about six foot. And, you know, it gives you an idea that this is a pretty tall structure when it's in place. Wanted something for a little scope, little scale. Now, we took this today, so if you think, look at what was already in place, what you saw in there, and you see just how much was done just in the 24 hours since we had been, been there previously. As they're starting to put the other elements on, and start to put them in place. They actually have to tie them all together because of the complexity of this, of the structure. Everything gets built, and then they'll make sure everything's leveled, everything's tied in properly, and then they'll pour all the footings. And this is-
Is the farm thing or is the little kids?
Farm, the whole.
The whole thing is farm?
Yeah, has an element of it being farming.
Yeah, and this is the, what, again, when we, when I was leaving today, they actually, for example, this got put in while we were in our meeting today. You saw them wheeling in place, they've now got, you know, a couple of the slides in place as it's starting to wrap around. So they're, they're moving quickly.
When our meeting started, there was no fencing around the playground. And when we left, they had already made a good portion of the way around it.
Yeah, this was, I took a picture of it because I thought it was interesting to show. Yeah, this was, I took a picture of it, cause I thought it was interesting to show yesterday, all of this fencing was sitting basically leaning against the posts that had been put in place, and I said, well, these folks can see that, what the fencing looks like. We came back today and the fencing was, actually, while we were there, they started putting like this side, I think they were working here and they were working their way the rest of the way around, and then they were closing it in, so.
So the other thing, could you, well, you keep standing this picture, so one of the things we run into is talking about where people can really sit within the park, and we do have a lot of brownstone that we're gonna make use of to utilize to put in places for, you know, natural seating, but what came out of this, the way the splash pad was built, is there's that back end, that backside that has the stone wall, that is a, it's a perfect height for sitting on, so it ends up that, you know, if someone's in with their children, making sure they're okay, they could be inside it, sitting on it, and it'll, they'll be able to sit on it comfortably.
And it allows them to sit inside, this ring that you see on the, on the outside of the splash pad, this actually should, this is not the quote unquote wet zone when it's operating, so if you have a parent sitting in there, they don't necessarily, don't have to necessarily have a suit on. These, now just jumping into looking at the park, and basically, all of the initial coat of asphalt has been put down, and this here shows that they've also done the base coat for the realignment of Strickland, so it gives you a good eye view of how this is all gonna tie and look, you know, when it's done.
And actually, today, they were working hard on the part that actually ties right into 17.
Yes.
They were working around that edge.
And by that, they're basically, right, cause what they have to do is, they actually have to now, instead of having this runoff area, oh, I can do this, make it easy to see, instead of having this runoff area where, right, where people with high speed would run down onto Strickland, this'll end up getting cleaned up, where the road will actually, right, the asphalt will come out, and I think you can see the markings that they have, and they'll clean that up, so that the road will basically be a turn onto this new realigned Strickland Avenue, but it'll also clean this up in here, so they're gonna end up having to basically run the guardrail and all that, they'll have to run it in, and they'll tie it in back in this area when they complete the project.
So that guardrail is going to move toward the yellow line?
Yes, this guardrail here, because the roadway will move in, right, and then we'll tie in with this roadway, with these markings.
About the asphalt residual with asphalt?
That'll, that's gonna come out. Yeah, that's gonna come out, I think they were actually working a little bit on that today.
Yes, I think they were.
Yeah.
They were just starting on it when we left.
Is this parking?
No, the clay actually was back over here, this whole area, this is the area where we ran into the clay issue, big vein of clay, so we had to do some remediation with stone and drainage to make that, make sure that the parking, long term, that the parking area was stable.
So I will tell you, on this part now, we're looking at it, obviously, we spent a lot of time talking about this hill, concerns about the drainage off the hill, whether we're gonna have an issue and have to put drains in it, it's pretty much bone dry back there now, so, I think it was just an element of the crazy weather we had, plus it was new and was squeezing out probably existing water in there, so it's not problematic at this point, so. It's, it's deep, I forgot if it's-
I, I can't remember if it's a-
I wanna say thir-
Well, it's probably, well, we should double check, but it's probably a two to one or-
Yeah.
Going up. I mean, it's, put it this way, it's, one of the reasons we really were kinda hoping we wouldn't end up with, you know, any kind of a wedge drain in there, et cetera, is that we definitely could see some people doing a little sledding over here in the winter time, so that gets, that gets preserved by the fact that it dried up, especially once the grass and all that grew in, so we haven't had any issues there. And then this little area, this is a little kind of a bonus area, as they, with some of the fill that they had, some of the topsoil, and as they removed some of the excess, the hill was in here, this ended up turning out to be a relatively flat area, so this is gonna get grassed, we're gonna have one of the trees sitting up in this corner to keep along, sort of to keep the pattern going around the park, but this is an area that actually could become a little usage area, if we wanted to, it'll be a little elevated place where you could have some picnic tables and some seating, where if people wanted to sit there, eat and watch ballgames, they can, it's kind of a nice, flat spot.
So what came out of that is, Jim and I had talked to one of the neighbors that was looking for some privacy in terms of near the walk, walking trail, and they originally were gonna put three pines in front of that area that now screams picnic nook, so when we were talking about where we were gonna find the sources of those two trees, I thought it was, I thought it was in the best interest to probably take the two trees, put them in front of that property, and use one tree in front of that nook and not block as much as the area that would've been blocked if they had the original design, so I think we cut, we nailed two things, we were able to find a source of trees, won't cost us more to put them in front of that property, and will also be able to at least just put one and leave that, most of it open for viewing when they're up there.
What about the trees that were removed?
Yeah, we talked about it today, and they picked a couple spots, so.
Yeah, and specifically for, just for when there was a couple, there was some, one house that was some screening put in front of it, and they've decided they would prefer not to have it, so we're just gonna move those trees to a different location, so that they could have a clean, open view of the park.
So.
Again, just another one, a picture that I had taken, it's, apologize for being a little out of sequence, I didn't notice that I hadn't pulled this one over, but just a straight overhead view of, again, this is a baseball, too. And one, basically becoming a little bit more, but yeah, this is that flat area that we talked about, go around and you can see where there's actually the paving, you know, for a walking trail, et cetera, that's going around the outside.
Where would the fitness drop?
The fitness equipment, actually, let me go back, I'll show you. Hang on a second. Fitness equipment is gonna go in this triangle right here. We have a couple of trees that were planted in there for shade, but this is actually the design where the fitness would go.
When you watch the ballgame, where are you gonna sit?
Well, there's gonna be some brownstone blocks that are placed around the park for some natural seating that is set, as well as encouraging people to bring chairs, and then you've also got, if people wanna stay in their cars, for example, this, when you look at the grades, people will be able to sit right in their cars here, their cars will be behind the fence, basically, this is a, here's the outfield, here's your outfield fence for the home run, then you have a stone wall with the elevation, and then you have the parking that's looking down into the park, and there's another fence, so if people wanna sit, they'll be able to sit and watch games right in their vehicles if they would like to, a really good poke of a home run, you know, could get exciting, but that's one option, and again, most of it's gonna be some of these benches that we put in place, and then as well as people bringing their own portable chairs. And there are gonna be options going forward if we decide that, you know, we want to put some bleachers in or things of that nature, that could be brought in, it was just looking at, with the initial phase of, you know, with the initial construction of the park, it was what made, what made sense.
The scoreboard?
Score, the, you've got basically the paths that go along both sides of the park here, and of course, in the fencing, you have some flat areas down along the fencing.
So the scoreboards are down in the-
The right field lines.
Yeah. Why, the conduit's there for putting the scoreboards, once this might-
Do you have a plan to sell any ads, like around the outfield fence, like a lot of you have a lot of these little parts?
So again, I mean, we're building it out, you know, obviously, that'll be a task for another group to look at how they wanna handle that. It was interesting because we were down the walkway, I think it was in Iantic, and there was a fencing across, overlooking the beach, and there was plaques all along the fencing that just snapped onto the fencing, where people had donated and it just ran, and so it's-
Same with those benches.
So it's, same thing, and the benches along the same thing, every bench has a plaque, along the fence, they have a plaque, so it's not like, I guess, they're just showing that they donated, obviously, if you have a company that's trying to donate, they wanna have people so they can read the thing, not have it as small.
In Iantic, there are a lot of the businesses block benches-
Yeah.
In addition to individuals, that was part of their campaign.
Yeah. We were just amazed at how many, I mean, it went forever, and I kept seeing them. So Jim, you wanna go to the front, we could talk about-
Yeah, I'm gonna go, there's a couple, a couple of slides got skipped that I noticed, so I wanna make sure we catch them all, but this here shows the, this is the eastern border, now this is heading back towards the park, and this was actually, when I showed you the initial pictures from two days ago, it wasn't paved, and then when we showed up today, this was, so, again, and I think this is gonna, this is, it's actually pretty nice with the trees in there, so, even though there's three in there and there's not enough room for the, for all three of them.
Well, those are the two that are leaving, and they oughta wanna buy a leave as well, we could leave it there.
Jim, do you have a challenge like that, Strickland Street, you all, and the-
I do, I have, I actually have a couple that I wanna make sure I get to, this was just taken straight overhead, cause it shows you the splash pad, the retaining wall, similar to what we showed over here, and then of course, here's the building, and here's where the pavilion will all be built under here to sit at.
So actually, while we're here, we could just talk, so that you're aware, we are dealing with discussions about the transformer that's on the site, so the engineering firm had decided to-
I'm gonna try to find a better pic, I had a good picture for that, but we'll just do it this way.
So right where his mouse is right there-
Right in here is a stone wall.
So they had set up a nice configuration and put the transformer there, so it's not really in view, it's tucked nicely, and then as we've moved and discussed whatever source, they've, they've brought up certain points about what they wanted in place, and every time they bring them up, we make sure that we address them and that we cover it, but they still are having an issue with that location. If they don't put it there, it'll kinda, it'll be where that box unit, essentially about where that box unit is right now.
Yeah.
So that may be part of our 25th discussion as well, about where that transformer should go.
Yeah, initially, they came, we showed up on site and, for a meeting, and we were told that Eversource wanted it right here, and we kinda thought that was not necessarily the appropriate place for it, and we came up with a plan of saying, no, what drove this discussion is that they said that they needed, for example, five feet in all directions, which is fine, so we looked at moving it out and giving them five feet in all directions. They also then said they needed 10 in the front, so we looked at realigning the fence, 10 feet in the front, no problem. So we've gone through a couple of these types of iterations, they also needed to make sure they had access within a proximity to it, that could handle a 20-ton vehicle, while the way this is already designed and the way it's being asphalted, they already said, contractor and engineering said we were fine in that regard, in terms of them coming in, to get proximity if they had to maintain it. So right now, it's really just a matter of whether or not they're gonna like the grade or fight us on the fact that it's not sitting at the same grade the vehicle would be, that's really what we're fighting at. In either case, they've now said, instead of here, we had our meeting, we said we were gonna look at here, and we've tried to resolve those issues, but as a plan B, it could sit back over here, so at least it's out of the sightlines of anybody coming to watch a game that is sitting in a car, sitting over here is where there's some additional handicap parking, so that's where you're likely to have somebody sitting and watching a game that doesn't necessarily wanna get out of the vehicle, so we really didn't wanna have any obstruction there. So we looked at it over here, what they, what Eversource came back with is, they said, no, it's gonna go over here, and that means breaking into these conduits and everything else versus just extending, so there's gonna be a continued discussion on that, but that is one of the issues that we're continuing to work on, so.
Are they giving you viable reasons why they're gonna move it 3 feet?
We cover their specifications.
Been in this business for many, many years, I kind of find it comfortable.
Yes, that, this is, that's, that's a good word for it.
We've met all of their specs.
It's basically, it's trying to make sure that we meet their spec, what we've found is that there has been a little bit of a rolling, you know, when the first thing was, make sure you can get proximity to it with a structure that's suitable and five feet, we did that, then it was, we need to have 10 feet in front, we did that, you know, and so we're, we're having a little bit of that iterative process to short circuit that process, because we just don't have time to keep going back and forth, we have a meeting that is set up, that we're all gonna be on, basically, we're all gonna be together in one place, and we're gonna try to solve it, so we can just put it to bed, make some decisions that we have to make, and go forward. Cause you're exactly right, you know, a few feet, we know it's easier for the vendor, it's, you know, it-
It's not gonna grow in there.
Part of the problem is that we sit and we talk with the engineering folks, and we talk with the builder, and we have a plan and say, this is logical, this makes sense, then, you know, we're not necessarily there when, when the power company shows up, so they have their perspective, and until we all get there at the same time, we're gonna keep having this issue, so, that's what, that's what has actually been set up.
So yeah, so we have a meeting to discuss the pole structure in front, and at the same time, we'll try to put the transformer to bed as well.
So, I know we've covered a lot of this already, so I'm gonna go through it quick, but basically, this is just a little bit better view of where the transformer pad would go, it actually would have another block in here, the conduit's come right up out of the ground, that's where ideally, we would end up setting it, you know, it's sort of out of sight, and it still gives plenty of good access, it, you know.
How tall is that wall, five feet?
Somewhere about there, I don't really exactly-
Worst case, dump two triacs and bury the wall.
That's actually what we talked about-
We did talk about that today.
What we talked about is if we end up having to put it over here, right, to put this issue to bed, and they can just extend the existing conduits that have already been swept up into this structure, we take down the couple, first couple, two or three courses of the wall down, right, and then we basically would, this would get filled in, and it would get graded down, so that it would all look the same as the rest of this, yeah, that's the plan. But the issue is, is that, when we, that was sort of the backup, that was the plan B, if they didn't like this, and then somehow, we got told it had to be over here, and that, that's the, we're getting closer, so we're getting closer, we're dialing it in, so.
Basically, it needs to-
Yeah, so.
Microzone?
Um, I mean, that's where it comes from, you know, cause he's the direct contact, but we don't know what the directives are, you know, that are coming in.
If you can remind me that, man.
Sure.
Are you leaving?
Yeah.
Yeah, 25th, yeah, 8 o'clock, 25.
We can notice it as a meeting, so all the selectmen can attend.
Hopefully, they can be artillery.
Sure, bring the whole troops in, all troops, and happy anybody can come.
Now, this is-
Yeah, I think the whole, that will be a board select meeting, so that we have more people there.
Well, I think it's good for everyone, this is actually, obviously, this is the southern part, this is the existing part of Strickland, and this is where it is now sweeping, and it is coming forward, and then of course, the park entrance over here, travelway here has, it's basically, it's 12-foot travel lanes, Strickland where it meets, to get, it meets with Strickland is a little bit narrower, so the road comes in, but basically, this is, this meets with what we need to make sure the buses, et cetera, can get down through this area. This right here is the existing center of Strickland, and, let's see, go to the next picture, this is actually where it's gonna tie into Route 17, you can see the sweep, and this is looking now, this is looking down Strickland, this is looking north, here is 17, and you can see what it's actually gonna look like and how it all ties in. What you'll see today, now, is that this is the existing pole line, this is the other thing, this is the other item that we're in negotiations in terms of how this pole line is gonna get reconfigured, because as you look here, we have one pole that is right on the edge of the asphalt, so this pole needs to get moved, basically, 20 or 30 feet back, we already have low wires, so there's gonna have to be a reconfiguration somehow of this pole line, whether it's two poles that are taller, or other potential configurations that, you know, that there is a potential configuration that's been proposed to us that I, that we are also not enamored with, where Frontier would stay on the existing pole line, and Power would shunt off, and then Frontier could just raise their cables, and Power would then come over here, that is the, that is another one that we are also fighting, I'm the same thing, right?
Yeah, is there a pole in the middle, or is it just one?
Yes, there's a pole, there's actually a pole in the middle that's here, and then it spans over to here.
Pole and, and pick this way, raise it, raise it a little, and go.
That, that's, right, keep it straight, keep it all in one. The issue that they're running into, and this is what's been vocalized to us, is that the concern is, is if the pole line continues straight, and the road, and they don't, and this is again, coming from Power, Frontier wants to continue straight, because it's a lot more cost efficient for them, and, right, it's just, to me, it's a smarter configuration anyway, but the concern is, we've got, you have to provide access to them to get in there and maintain it, so Power, Eversource's concern is whether or not they're gonna have the ability to- So Power, EverSource's concern is whether or not they're gonna have the ability, this road would be maintained for them to get in and service that, those poles or those wires if it needs to happen. So that's, that's, again, that's gonna be part of the discussion, that'll all be part of the discussion when we get together a week from Friday. Yeah, it's not an issue, Ben, of us, of us wanting them to move them. It's an issue where we have, we have two entities that are basically the controlling authority, right? They're both part of the joint pole line agreement and they both want to do different things. And what we need to do is we need to get everybody on the same page. So we're doing one, one thing. We don't want to end up with a dual pole line, um, you know, associated with this.
So the other thing, the last part about the whole poles is that we're required to have lighting at the entrance to the park and to the road. And unless they repli, move those poles to certain locations, we're gonna have to put an additional two poles in order to put that lighting. So it's like, well, if you're moving poles, if you're gonna decide you need to move poles, you're telling me you can't move them the five feet over to give us a pole to put the lighting on that's required, I, you know, if you're putting new poles. I, I don't know what it is. We'd have to really, like, it's...
Which, which one? You got, you got, you got one pole here. Right? And, and that might get us out. Now, the problem is from here where this is located, that would be a very, to get out, because remember, the intersection's actually gonna be out over here? That would be a pretty long, right, what they refer to as right of overhead. But basically, the, the lighting fixture off the pole, that's a pretty good distance.
Although they already have one on the next pole farther down, one of those long connections.
So, and then... And then, of course, the other pole right now is sitting in the midspan. The issue is, you've only got about 12 feet over the road right now with these wires.
No, there's a light further up on the next pole.
I believe it was part of the approval.
Yeah. No, at the next, at the next one, there's lighting on the next one.
I can go to a different picture that might show it.
Right there.
There it is, yeah. And, and it's interesting. I mean, when you look at the whole configuration of this intersection. Like I said, we can, we can take a look at it, but I think the distance is actually further than that. And that, and then when you look at it out there, it's already a long... There you go. All right, uh, this is basically an overhead view, just, um, thought it was interesting just for folks to actually see exactly how it's gonna go. And this intersection, when it's done, uh, and this is one of the primary, this is one of the drivers for doing this, the realignment, was with the park entrance coming in, this actually is gonna make this intersection a lot safer. Before with the runoff, you know, you always in the neighborhood, you had people that could run off, um, you know, a pretty good rate of speed off of, off of 17. It's gonna be a lot more controlled now.
Yeah, and that was one of the critical things to this whole configuration was to make sure they were gonna feel comfortable that we made it safer, so.
Right. That's the, that's the driver. And this is just looking at it again, just another view that makes it a little bit easier to see. Well, that's, that's a great question. So if, if you had a situation where both of the pole lines were actually just gonna move, all right, and you didn't have anything, this could just become grass. If, right now, we know at a minimum, we, right, hopefully, based on where we're sitting, both are gonna stay right where they are and we don't have a, a dual pole line. If, if we end up with an issue where CLMP or EverSource decides that they have to move, then we still end up having to maintain this area in here anyway because of the Frontier pole line. Frontier has indicated that they're not gonna move that soon. What's that? Well, that's another question. When you look at over here, you really want to make sure that this has the proper markings and visually, right, where we can line in the road. So as people are moving north on Strickland, we want to make sure that they actually stay with the curve, right? So you gotta be a little bit careful with, you know, like in terms of how far along the railing, you know? What's that? Well, there's railing here that's coming up and right now, it looks like it, like the, the wires that come off the end of it and somewhere around here.
Yeah.
So there is actually visually, when you're coming down the road, you'll actually have something that's showing the realignment. But there's also a pretty good shoulder here. So the question's gonna be is how do you provide access into this? Do you provide access, you know, over in this area, right? Um, you talking about over here? Yeah, that's maybe, right? That's actually part of the discussion we have to ask, we have, is how are we gonna provide the best access to it? It has to be pliable and it has to be something that we can maintain.
Yeah, they're not gonna drive across, they're, they're gonna want... So using existing road is what you gotta do, it's just how you use it.
Yeah, because we have this road here today and this, right now, if you look at, this is where the walls are, so this is where we have to have, you know, the, the railing, right? And the same thing over here, because we have the wetlands that we have to get around and protect against. And obviously, you want to carry that through into the corner. Yes, that's one of the reasons we took some of these pictures. They're good for tonight to discuss, but also for... We'll have a random laptop. Or if we have to do something that's sort of, we'll have to, we'll have to strategize on that.
Bring his drone, send his drone up.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we were talking about that today, about the fact that, you know, the water line.
Yeah, it's water, as well.
Do you know if the lots that Nelson Goodrich had talked about next to his house were sold? Nelson owned a house on the, where the dirt is, you know, further north. And there were a couple of lots around the house. Do you know if those were sold?
They were, they're across the street?
Yes.
There are no other lots, that's all one lot.
Well, he was going to contemplate dividing them and that's why the access was so important. When we bought the property? No.
No, it's the cross from the...
It's further north, you can't see what...
Let me see if I have another picture.
The house is on the...
So basically, you're talking about over here, right?
The question was, I wanted to know if those lots had been sold because a lot of that land has been sold since Mr. Goodrich's estate, he's been sold. Because when we bought the property, when we bought the property, one of the considerations that the town agreed with Mr. Goodrich on is that he wanted to develop around that house. He would be able to and the town wouldn't stop him because there was no egress during floods.
Have to allow them to go through our property, get out of there.
I may actually have a better picture of that, give us a second.
Well, it didn't.
In 84.
But it's getting across, that would be, it would become an island and they wanted the ability to get across somehow. It looks like it would have been across the road and then probably...
In 84, they swung... In 1984, I think they did swing around the back of it and went out one of the sides of driveways for one of the houses that were over there.
So essentially, right, right there, break the jam across, right there, straight across, right across the road, huh? He would have the ability to drive straight across there.
Yeah.
Through the park.
It's a matter of life safety, right?
Right, yeah.
Yes. It had more to do with the ability to develop those lots. Because the town might have said no because the inability to get egress to the event. So we had agreed that it would be okay. We figure it out. I think somehow 17 goes up a little bit, but you couldn't go north or south of it.
Yeah, so like I said, in 84, they got, they went out one of those...
Well, that may be the improvement that we didn't know about when we purchased the land. See, we didn't know how that egress was gonna occur, so if it's gonna occur there...
No, I'm saying, we're 17, at that point. I mean, you're talking minimal, what part of that is in a flood back in...
But I think on either side, it's worse now. I just wanted to mention it so that people in the room know.
But what he did is, he swung around the back of the farmland and went out one of those side houses, is what we understood is what he did at that point.
Do you see the entrance? There's an entrance right across. Just right to your left, right there, that's where you need to come from.
Yeah.
The flood plain land is about, if you scroll, you can go left, is about, right about, straight across street right there, straight across street, draw a trace, straight up towards the pipeline, right there, that's the flood line. Intersection is in the river.
That's a beautiful picture, Jim.
As soon as the rest of it grows in and it's finished, once the park's finished, it's a great...
It is, it is very... That's it, though. We've, we've actually gone through and this is, any other questions or anyone wants to see?
Yeah, that covers it all.
We've kind of covered it.
So you had a question about your, your food pavilion there. You mentioned, um, you would derive some income. Who operates the facility?
Right now, that's, that's all gonna be, those policies will be decided by Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be, it's a Park and Rec facility and Parks and Recreation will have to, to work on that.
So, well, it could be and I also, I also offer that information because the, um, health departments are, you know, all over the place, they're all according to federal code at some point. So they're all working towards that. So federal code on a facility like that where you're gonna have a health license and then you're gonna have people, perhaps different people operating it, that might not be so easy.
Yeah, and that's a point. We, we, I mean, we had preliminary rough discussions about it, but we know that that's something that, once the facility's up and running, that'll have to be decided. Yeah. So I will, actually, there is one other thing I'll note because obviously, I know it's a point of questions. So with regards to the fitness circuit, so, um, Nate has tried to arrange a meeting and he's working on it. We're trying to bring together some people that are on the committee with some citizens that might be involved with, um, doing jobs where they're involved with, you know, exercising programs. So we're trying to bring them together so that they could review what was the original plan of equipment to see if it really will satisfy the needs of every age group. And so that, uh, so we're working on getting that done. The builder, the developer had already said that it was gonna be impossible to try to squeeze in getting the fitness circuit in this year. So that would be a primary focus early spring before we really opened up. They'll, you know, we'll come to some agreement in the near future on the equipment, just finalize it and then arrange to have that purchased and be ready to go for, um, for a spring install. In, it's gonna be in. Yeah, I would assume, I would expect it would be, yeah.
Do you remember how many cars parked?
227, I believe. That is one of the discussions, yes.
Yeah, there's a whole, I mean, there's conduits that are coming in, that basically are gonna come into the mechan, into the, basically the electrical mechanical room over here that will allow us to bring in whether we want to end up, for example, ultimately having Wi-Fi at the park, things of that. Which if you have Wi-Fi, then you can do remote monitoring like, you know, at the park, we've got a DVR. Uh, once we get some, a data cable in there, we can, we can do remote monitoring, et cetera. Yeah. Yeah, which has actually come a long way. You know, the range and the, yeah. So. All right, any other questions?
So that, that's what Jim and I have spent our last few years doing.
Yeah, they're doing a nice, it's really gonna be, it's really beautiful when you look at it.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Are there any other reports or status committee reports?
Well, I guess we could say, although I haven't, I know there's a meeting tomorrow for the library board, but I guess the, that went to bid, right, the, uh, project?
They had the bid conference, I think, either yesterday or today. And they had, I think, 14 people come out.
Oh, I hadn't heard that yet, so 14?
That's what I heard. So they were very pleased with that. I believe the bids are due November, honor about November 7, I think, 7 or 8? Somewhere in that. I don't know the exact date, but it was sometime that week for the library. Anything else? Public comment? Are you raising your hand?
Well, now you got, now you have to speak.
Informal discussion? There will be another meeting of this board after the election regardless of the outcome, so this is not our last meeting before. We know at least one person is not going to be running, that's Mr. Serb. So we will be seeing you after the election.
Yeah, I'll visit. I won't go away.
No, you're not going, you're not going far.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you didn't think I would.